I'm going to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock on April 11. This call to order effectively adjourns the closed session. That was not adjourned to this. John, can you do a roll call for me?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Here.
Town Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond. John Hudson, Town Clerk here.
I'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to remember the oath of commandment, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
I'm going to read in the closed session summary, the closed session took place over two different evenings. So on March 29, 2023, the time is wrong in here. I think it's eight o'clock. It says six o'clock PM. It was virtual and... Oh, I know why. It was six o'clock. Never mind. I'm reading the wrong one. March 28, 2023, time is 8:30 PM, location is Town Hall. And that was closed under general provisions, Article 3-305b1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance of evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The Board of Commissioners went into closed session to discuss personnel matters and, under the annotated code for 3-305, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. So the reason for the personnel matter was just standard budget personnel matters, and the reason for the legal advice was to discuss NHH. On March 28, those who voted to go into closed session was the motion was made by Commissioner Colbert, seconded by Commissioner Lot. All five commissioners were unanimous in voting to go into closed session. All five commissioners were in closed session. No actions or votes were taken. On March 29, 2023, we reconvened at 6 o'clock PM after recessing. And the... Those in attendance were President Franklin, Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Hanchett, Commissioner Lot, Kyle Snyder, Town Administrator, and Kevin Best, Town Attorney. No actions were taken, and just a discussion about annexation, legal counsel. That read in. I will move on to new business. And we are going to start with Resolution 2023-06, which is special election. This resolution sets the special election date. John, do you want to read it into the record and then also tell us about it based on your meeting with the Board of Supervisors of Elections?
Yes, will do. Resolution 2023-06, session, special town meeting, dated April 11, 2023. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro declaring a vacancy in office, calling a special election to be held on Tuesday, May 9, 2023, poll hours from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM. Had a meeting with the Board of Supervisors of Elections, and we've determined that, of course, as you all see, the special election date will be on May the 9th. The polling place, of course, will be the Town of Upper Marlboro Town Hall, 14211 School Lane, Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Polling hours will be 8:00 AM until 7:00. The article has been prepared for the PG Post newspaper. That includes two requirements by the Charter. There will be... People can start requesting absentee ballots as of right now. If you'd like to request an absentee ballot for once they do get produced, we are taking those applications. Candidate packets. The candidate packets would include your page that would include your 10 signatures, as well as we also must get your written statement. Those will be due on May the 1st by 5:00, by close of business. We need to have those materials in so that you can be considered as a candidate. And then, so on May the 1st, we will go ahead and we will certify all the documents to say that who is running. And then, of course, we will make that announcement as the candidates are going through. But that's all spelled out in this resolution.
Okay, thank you. So we just need to approve this and make sure we're okay with it. So I'm going to go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Colbert, do you have any questions? Commissioner Hanchett? Commissioner Lot? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing no concerns, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve a motion to approve Resolution 2022-03-06. And Commissioner Lot made that motion. Is there a second? John, will you call the roll for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Resolution 2023-07, appointing three members of the Board of Supervisors of Elections. When we're done voting on this, we will take a moment to swear in those members. So John, can you read that into the record for us?
Will do. Resolution 2023-07, session, special town meeting, date April 11, 2023. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro to appoint three new supervisors of elections.
Thank you. And those supervisors were appointed in September, and we approved them in September, but we did not actually pass this resolution in September. So we were just fixing that. And those members are Evelyn Stevens, John Summerlot, and Danielle Durham. So are there any questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Colbert?
No.
Commissioner Hanchett?
No.
Commissioner Lot? Hearing none, I ask if there is a motion to approve Resolution 2023-07. Is there a second?
Second.
John, would you call the roll for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So we have this exciting moment where we are going to swear in these three individuals. And we will go in alphabetical order, or how it's written in the resolution? I think it starts with Evelyn. Guess I'll stand here to swear on Evelyn, because Evelyn is with us on the screen.
Yes.
And so normally we have... We just say this out, right? Does she need to have a book to swear on?
Correct. John. It would be John.
So I will say the oath and you will repeat after me, okay?
Okay.
You've done it before, so you're a pro. Aye?
Aye.
Say your name.
Evelyn.
Your name. Evelyn Stevens.
Aye, Evelyn Stevens.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And I will be faithful and bear allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will
The best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office supervisor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Uh-oh. I'm sorry.
Execute the office of
Okay, so can you say that last statement again? I'm sorry.
I'm going to break it in. I'm going to break it into execute the office of
Execute the office of
Supervisor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Supervisor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations, and thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't be there with y'all.
We always miss you when you're not here. Jay.
Miss you all, so.
I mean, should we have him come here? I don't know. Should he come up here? So aye?
Aye. John Summerlot.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance to the state
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution and laws thereof
And support the Constitution and laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
The best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Supervisor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections
Supervisor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to read it again? Aye?
Aye.
Anyhow? Do affirm, do affirm that I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. And that I will be faithful and that I will be faithful And bear true allegiance to the state And bear true allegiance To the Constitution and laws thereof, and support the Constitution. And that I will, and that I will, the best of my skill and judgment. Diligently and faithfully Diligently and faithfully Without partiality or prejudice Without partiality or prejudice The office of, execute the office of supervisor to the Board of Supervisors Supervisor to the Board of Supervisors According to the Constitution According to the Constitution and laws of the state. Thank you very much. I'm really appreciate you. And thank you for letting me. Do we want to see? Do you guys want to see a picture of your board?
Yeah, just stand right there. We're good with that whole thing.
If you guys want to come up, we'll put Evelyn on the screen. Have certificates for you, but our other commissioners. Yeah, so we have the oath and the certificate, and John will get
There we go.
Can you get with the camera, or are you thinking?
I'm taking with the camera, just for them.
Oh, Evelyn. I'm doing it. Okay.
Oh, yes, Evelyn.
I don't know how this looks.
Just smile.
You look great.
You look fabulous.
Thank you.
Did you get a picture or video? No. Okay. So it's probably easier. We'll do another. Thank you, thank you guys. We appreciate you.
Good night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, get him back to the truck.
There Franklin?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
I, you know, I'm away with my family. So I would normally stay the whole time, but I'm not able to. I'll catch up when I get back.
Yeah, if you have any comments on anything that happens tonight, you know, you can call me, so.
Right, thank you.
Have fun with your family.
Thank you. Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. We'll move on to our business, which is the treasurer approval, which is a board vote. Oh, it's all in one resolution. Yes, John?
Yes.
So I'm nominating for treasurer of the Board of Commissioners after discussions with the commissioner, Thomas Hanchett. So is there any discussion on that? Commissioner Colbert?
No.
Commissioner Hanchett?
No.
Commissioner Lot?
I'm fine. No, I'm here. I'm fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry, I know you're multitasking.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve Commissioner Thomas Hanchett as treasurer for the remainder of our term? Is there a second?
So moved.
All right.
Will you call the
Yep, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So we'll move into Resolution 2023-08, check signing. That will put... I'll have John read it in. That will put Commissioner Hanchett as treasurer, and it will put Commissioner Karen Law as the second signer on the account, which is the position Commissioner Hanchett held up until 30 seconds ago. Go ahead, John. You can read it into the record.
Resolution 2023-08, session, special town meeting dated April 11, 2023. A resolution for the purpose of designating those persons to the treasurer, who shall be authorized to sign checks, certificates of deposit, and other bank instruments issued on behalf of the town.
Okay.
Date arises, and the treasurer is unavailable, and establishing the dollar amount above which all checks made payable by the town shall be issued and signed by the treasurer and president or two other persons designated herein, of which at least one is to be a commissioner.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Colbert?
No.
Hanchett? Lot? With no discussion, I will ask if there is a motion to approve Resolution 2023-08, check signing. And should I second it because the other two are named in it? I'll second it because of the way the other two are in it. Will you call the vote for us, please?
Will do. Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So we will adjourn the special meeting, and we will move on to the work session. We're going to recess quickly before we come back to the work session. So we are in recess at the moment. Right, I'm going to call the work session of the Board of Commissioners to order at 7:24 PM. Clark Hudson, can you do another roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot. And Town Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
So we'll move right in. We only have old business. Oh, sorry. We'll go to the review of the agenda, because I have two modifications I want to make. Can you go through the agenda for us, Clark Hudson?
Will do. A, Better City Update Presentation. B, Charter Review or Discussion. C, Meeting Regulations for Discussion. D, Fiscal Year 24 Budget for Discussion. E, Ordinance 2022-02 Personnel for Discussion. F, Human Resources, RFPs for Discussion. Administrative Update, then a preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda, and adjournment.
So you added administrative updates, which isn't on here, which covers the thing up, because we all got an email about Part 70, Title V, permit renewal for Brown Station landfill, and I wanted us to be able to discuss it. So if we can add administrative updates to the end, if everyone's okay with that? And with Better City not here, if we can just make it a Better City Update instead of a presentation, I can just tell you kind of what our last... You guys can still get some information. Is everyone okay with those two changes?
I can think of a third.
Yes.
I think this was partially discussed, but the meeting regulations piece. So we think about holding off on that until we have a full board back in place.
Yeah, actually, I think it's a good idea to wait the meeting regulations till we have our fifth commissioner, because they may have changes that they want to make, and then it's just more efficient. I believe that it gives me the authority to make the changes we discussed already, like without it being official, and all of that isn't giving more public input. So I think not going to be complaints about that. So I think it's a good idea. We were kind of talking a little about the June meeting, because, so the new commissioner will be elected on May 9th. It won't be sworn in until June 12th. Is that right, John?
That is correct.
It's June 12th. So we actually were having this discussion because there was a request in January for us to take, to go down to one meeting in June instead of two. So if what we do is, if on June 12th, we swear in the new commissioner and have a special meeting that evening as our June meeting, we can discuss meeting regulations. We can discuss the charter, charter stuff. The budget will have already been passed, so we can actually start to look at the property standards ordinance, which is like the last one that I know needs some big update. Does that sound okay to everyone?
It's okay to me.
Right, so we're gonna... We should vote whether we're going to table meeting regulations, though. So we added two things, but let's just take a quick vote to table meeting regulations to June. Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett?
I'm sorry.
Do you vote to table meeting regulations to June? And I vote to table it to June. Commissioner Lot, are you with us?
Yes.
Right, so we all agreed to do that, so that's what we're doing. Does anyone else have any other changes? All right, we will move forward, and we'll start with a Better City Update. And so Kyle, if you can tag team this with me if I forget anything. Basically, Better City has kind of collated all this data from the forums and the conversations they've had, and they're putting it together into a economic development plan. They have also taken some of the stuff from our vision plan that we've talked about, and kind of, they're making it all look pretty together, basically. And they have the data from the branding survey. They have been able to analyze most of it, but the way some of the later questions were specifically about the branding and the logo, it's... You could input your own answer, and so they're still working to collate that data. But generally, it was like pretty close whether people liked the logo or didn't. I think there was like slightly more people wanted to see the logo changed than not. So I think it's still a conversation, and the actual data around what changes people want is taking a little longer. Did I miss anything there?
I can pretty much do it.
The other thing is we're taking that The other thing is, we're taking that picture that they kind of put together as a vision idea for downtown, and they are, we're bringing it around with us, so that it becomes a conversation starter for folks. And then, when people give us feedback, that feedback will be given to Better City for them to add. Do you guys have any questions?
Kind of the next, what are their next milestones?
I would say just finalizing the whole plan for us to review and decide, you know, like, do we want changes? Are we going to adopt it? I think they're also working on the branding piece. But I think probably next time we meet with them, they'll have all the data collated, and then they'll be ready to start coming up with some designs and ideas.
Do you have timelines for the finalized plan?
They give, they might have given us a timeline.
Yeah, they may have.
I think they did.
I don't think they said, or even in the slides they showed up. But also, we're looking at, we discussed, like, parting with Marlboro Day, with a placemaking event with Park and Planning, and they're bringing their placemaking trailer to Marlboro Day, so that'd be an opportunity to provide feedback, a draft plan or something like that. It's a Park and Planning placemaking, like placemaking, Suitland and stuff. I don't know if you've heard or followed that, but, um.
Yeah, so.
Something about mission.
There's a mission of Park and Planning.
It's, it's like, you, so first, thank you to MNCPTC, because they're going to give us this cool box to do this placemaking thing. And that is something that we really appreciate, so I'm just gonna say that. What placemaking is, is you kind of get the community to talk about all the things that, that Better City has been getting us to talk about. What makes this someplace we want to be at? What is it that makes Upper Marlboro, Upper Marlboro? What do we want this to be? And then, how does that actually translate visually into the environment that we're in? And so, they actually have a whole division that does this and like created all these designs for Suitland and all of that area. And basically, it's what we're doing with Better City. And then, we are talking about Better City is recommending like a design firm to come in and do some of that, like placemaking stuff, that's gonna pull everything together. So, it's kind of like how the built environment helps create a sense of place that is consistent with the community.
Park and Planning will be at Marlboro Day. Placemaking section will be a mix of, I guess, Better City and us and Park and Planning, talk about some of their other countywide planning initiatives, so it's just a good conversation. They have shipping container with all this furniture that they unload. Shipping container is gonna be dropped off at Marlboro Day. They put it at the Parker Park permit as well. Preliminary discussions.
And, and really, thank you to them, because they weren't, they aren't necessarily. So, okay, any other questions? We'll try to get the timelines, because they probably gave them to us. So, we're gonna move on to the charter review, which is a discussion. And I'm gonna kind of lead off by saying, like, we, we're initially, we were gonna pick a charter review board right now, and each of us was gonna nominate someone, but I don't think that's fair to the commissioner who will be coming on the board. But, but this needs to be done. Like, we are all understanding that problems and that are caused by some of the things in the charter and our modernization and growing. So, I thought tonight, we can have a discussion about some of those items, and like, I have a list from our discussion. And then, my plan is this, that each of us would nominate a person to be on a charter review board. And in order to keep us moving forward and be efficient, what we'll do is we'll do that in May at the work session. And I will talk to, I will talk to everyone who's running for office to tell them to think about who they would nominate if they are elected. And then, whoever is elected will give me their name, and I will nominate that person on there. That way, the board can, charter review board can get started, and the, the new commissioner can have a say in who's on it. Does that sound fair and efficient to everyone as far as process?
So, basically, we're pushing this back by a month, it looks like.
So, yeah, so, the April will become May.
Yep.
But that commissioner will get to be part of the process.
Exactly, yeah, but no, that sounds perfect.
That sounds fair.
Definitely.
Does that sound fair to you, Commissioner Lot?
Yes, I'm cool with that. Yeah, the new person should have a say, yeah.
And I'll have them documented to me, so you all can see that the name is coming from them and that kind of thing. All right, so, that's the, the plan.
Sorry, we may have talked about this before. A number of members. I hope.
Oh.
They're voting on recommendations. Voting on recommendations. They're voting on recommendations, how do they adjudicate?
So, I think, because the charter review board and Kyle, or John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's gonna be made up of one, five people that are nominated, like residents that are nominated by us, and one staff member, right, which would be you or John, right? Like, so, a staff member to kind of guide them through, because these are residents and.
So, you're saying.
Right, the staff member wouldn't vote, the resident.
Someone in the building, and then the five other people would be the voters?
Would be the residents of the town. But they're gonna need a staff member to walk them through everything.
And how often would they be meeting?
John, can you tell us a little bit about how that board works and how frequently it meets?
Yeah, so, you'd have a staff member that would actually work with, with the residents or the people who you guys put on that board. And you would meet however often it would take to get through the entire charter, to figure out what all needs to be addressed and changed, or proposed items that they would like to see happen. So, it just depends on, you know, how fast they can work their way through the charter, because you've gotta look at the entire charter if we're gonna do a charter review.
And I think you said it should be about four meetings, but it could be more.
I would suggest a four-meeting time, but it would be good if we could sit down and do it that way.
So, more meetings at first than four times a year after that?
Oh, no, they're only, it's like a brief time. So, the board is gonna meet four times in the month of, months of June, July, June and July. They, the idea is hopefully that they'll be able to just meet in June and July every other week and be done, right, John?
That's right.
So, it's not an ongoing thing?
No, yeah, they're just gonna.
So, it's just to get citizens' input on the charter?
The charter is a big thing. It's, it's like the constitution of a small town, right? Like, so, we definitely want our residents to be involved in decisions.
Have you just told everybody anything like that before?
We haven't done a charter review, but we've made necessary changes as we've gone along. But like, we were just joking about the part that's in the charter that says women are equal to men in the charter. Like, there's a section about that says that, so, so, things need to be updated.
Just the wording and, okay.
So, I'm gonna quickly go through the notes I've taken based on our conversations of the things we are gonna ask the charter review board to look at for changes. And then, you guys add if I missed anything, is that? So, we talked, and this is a big one, is about the powers of the president and the hiring and firing. And we just, I just talked with staff about this and like, basically, setting it up so that the board of commissioners has the ability to hire, hire, well, hires in the. No, but have the ability to fire a staff member by majority vote. But also, that the mayor has the ability to suspend someone or fire someone if there is wrongdoing involved. So, balancing that, that need, and also having the board be able to call a vote. And so, kind of setting that up, I think that's something we've talked about. Creating a position of a vice mayor or a mayor pro temp, we've talked about, and that can either be rotating or, and maybe go through all of them. Then, with regard to like elections, a recall provision to kind of put some teeth into the ethics. And updating the absentee ballot process. And then, we were talking about how we're elected. Should the mayor run separate? Should we have, well, we had a discussion about, should we have wards? And we had a discussion about annexation and concerns about, you know, resident concerns about annexation and, and voting dilution. So, what we were talking about is creating a population trigger provision, so that like, once we got above a certain population, it would trigger a public hearing on moving towards wards. And then, like, do we want to have staggered terms? How long do the terms want to be? Did I miss anything that we talked about?
Yeah, I'm good.
So, do we, do I kind of talk about that and give some guidance to this board when we can be?
My question is, are however, five, let's just say averages and, you know, is it just gonna be organized by the, like Kyle per se, let's say it's him? They need to know what the process is, like what training would be involved?
So, the staff member, whether it's John or whether it's Kyle, or they alternate, or however they do it, is gonna guide them in, gonna take them through the charter. They're gonna say, hey, the commissioners want to make sure that the president isn't the only person who can fire someone, and that the president can't unilaterally fire someone without us having a say. But also, that the president can suspend someone who's engaged in wrongdoing. They'll tell them that, and then they'll consider that and that. Then, they'll say, okay, you know, like, we've gone through the charter and seen like some things that are old that are just not relevant anymore, so staff done that. So, they'll say, what about have this, can remove this, that kind of thing. And then, it's really the election section where they'll get into this stuff about a recall provision and how the election is run and, and who runs in what way. But I think we've all run for office, right? And what I think we should be telling the review committee is like, hey, if it was set up with like this, would I run for office? I don't know, like, because we have trouble recruiting people sometimes to run for office. We'll see what comes out of the special election, but we don't want to make it a situation where people are like, oh, no, I'm not doing that, because four years is too long, or because, you know, I don't want, I want to just run for commissioner and then I'll pick the mayor, or I think the mayor should run separate, or however that is, and that the residents should really decide. But, you know, whether people are willing to run, so I, I think we should talk about.
I would say if you have qualifications or candidates, turn that, that something that's kept up. One, one of the things I wonder, though, is, of course, we as a board are gonna have our ideas and thoughts on it as well. I guess I wonder, are we putting a little bit of the cart before the board? Should there not be, you know, some, some level of objectivity from the review board to make their recommendations prior to, you know, kind of, this, you know, what we would make a direction would be or whatnot? I, I would kind of think that five citizens, five people who've been in this town, and how we have governed so far.
Right.
And probably lived here for a while, you know, other administrators have governed, probably have ideas. I'm not gonna necessarily call it that too much before we get kind of their objective recommendations.
So, we would, we would want to, because I think we all agree, the hiring, firing situation needs to be addressed. So, we can say to them, we want you to address this section, and we want some kind of accountability element. And we would also like to have, would we like to have a vice mayor or mayor, mayor pro? The mayor pro temp, I think, is where everyone who's not mayor gets to be mayor for part of the term. So, like, if there's, so, there's four right now, and it's a two-year term, so each of you would be vice mayor or mayor pro temp for six months out of the time. I like that, because I like, like, it would have been nice to like have kind of some of the experiences to like help you if you're staying, but that's just me. But for them to decide, they have like one vice mayor, how does that vice mayor get picked? And is that something we feel, like, I can say, I think we need it. I think we need it because, you know, hey, sometimes I can't go to two events at the same time. And being able to say, hey, I'm the mayor pro temp or the vice mayor is a little higher, kind of, up. And then, the other thing is that that person then automatically would have the powers of the mayor if something happened to the mayor. Or if the mayor went on vacation, that person would have the authority to, you know, execute things if there was an emergency, so.
Can I ask, can I ask, is that not the way it is now with the treasurer?
No, the treasurer is only authorized to sign checks. So, if, if there was.
I thought the treasurer was technically next in charge.
No. Treasurer is, the only thing the treasurer is authorized to do is sign checks and, and sign documents. There is no second in charge, so.
I thought the same thing for a while.
Yeah, it's the way, the way the charter is written, the treasurer is actually, doesn't even have to be a commissioner. It's just someone that the mayor appoints. So, yeah, so, if I was out of town and there was an emergency, there would be no one who could sign emergency ordinances, you know, all that. I would, I would come back, obviously, to deal with that. But yes, if, in case of, and if something happened to me, you all, you know, I would probably have to, like, if I got sick or something like that, I would have to, I don't, there's no provision for that. When I had the flu, I just had to figure out how to deal with it while I felt like death.
So, the charter review board would help us citizens' input on how to do it, and then we approve it?
Yes, but I, 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 I think sitting, you know, I think we all agree there needs to be a second. Yes?
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree, I think, but we don't have some type of continuity. One of us as a commissioner, whatever the position is, is outlined or, you know.
No, but if something happened to the town while I was on vacation, that's hard, right?
So, let me ask, so, is this person, so, is this person, we would have to, okay, so, basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to determine who would do it, if it would be a commissioner or someone, someone, does it have to be a commissioner?
Yes, the vice, that would be, it's an elected official. So, the treasurer is a different thing, and maybe they need to look at the treasurer, whether it even should be a position of a commissioner. It could be, it's tough, because with the check signing, but then, I guess, the vice mayor could have the check signing. Not Kyle, I'm looking at Kyle, because he's nodding and whatnot. The vice mayor could have the check signing ability, or there could be a vice mayor and a treasurer. The treasurer could still be the signer, but the, the way the treasurer is dealt with in the charter probably needs to, definitely needs to be looked at. And then, I think we should have a vice mayor who can also go, or a mayor pro temp, who can go to events, who can testify in Annapolis as the mayor pro temp instead of a commissioner. Just when you put mayor in the word, people listen more. So, so, that makes two of us that can go and do some of that stuff. And then, also, right, if there's an emergency and I'm not here, or the mayor isn't here, then that's that second person who can.
Delegate or whatever.
Sign emergency orders. What else, Kyle?
Make decisions.
Make, make the decisions about how to deal with the emergency. Make, make the decisions about how to deal with the emergency, sign executive orders. Have it, have the town credit card to buy generators or sandbags or whatever is necessary for said emergency. But we don't have, so, so I think what we're saying is we all agree that positions should exist, so we're gonna ask the charter review board to create it. Yes?
I'm not opposed to it. I mean, if it's gonna, if it's gonna bring some help, instead of us having to wait for someone else to step in, and we already have somebody on board who can fill the shoes of what needs to happen, then I think it's important that we have a backup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So just to kind of clarify, we can't, we can't change this. Correct, we can't change our structure. While we're in the structure, it has to take effect after.
If I have, that'd be an attorney question. You're right, because it would be recommended that, like we did for the election, the five people waited for the next election.
Yeah. So, and by the time this board gets back to us and we approve it, it's gonna be September, then it takes forty-five days?
Uh, I mean, after you guys, it fits for forty-five days.
Forty-five days before it's enacted. So if we enact it in September, it will be effective the same timeframe as the next election. So, we're asking them to do this thing, and that will impact the next, the board of commissioners that get selected in November.
So it wouldn't go into effect until next term?
Yeah, by the time everything's done, it won't go into effect until next year.
That way to go.
Okay, so we're gonna ask them to add that. Ask them to fix the thing about the powers of the president and staff and accountability, ethics type teeth in the vice mayor thing and look at elections. Good? Are we ready to move on to the budget? This is the fun part. Okay, I don't hear any disagreements. So we'll move on to the budget. So Kyle has, there's a budget book in your, in here that I've gone through and written, but it does not have any amount in it. And like I said last time, I was gonna bring you a budget that is not yet balanced so that we can all have a say because there are, we have to cut things. And it's fair for all of us to discuss those decisions. Kyle is gonna pull up a spreadsheet. On the top of that spreadsheet, there is a little gray box. And we are looking for the box in the bottom right corner to be zero. Right now, it's ninety-four, about ninety-four thousand. So we have to cut that much money from this budget. So, I did do a few things today. Well, so first of all, the Public Works and Public Safety did some cuts in their budget. General Government is more kind of our area.
Sorry.
Okay, so I do wanna talk about one line, which is a little bit of our, where our problem comes from. Some of our problem. The town hall repair and maintenance, do you want to go down to that, Kyle? So, we have two HVAC units, and Darnell, you can jump in if I get this wrong. The HVAC on the side that work right now is a household unit, and it is nearing the end of its lifetime. So we've put in money to cover that replacement. The other unit has been serviced, right? We had a repair done to it. But it is, the air conditioning is not working. So, it was warm today, but not unbearable, but I think you had to send staff home early one day last week.
Yeah, it was almost eighty degrees last weekend. The new wing, the new wing is the issue of the heat.
Right, so it's the other side where the staff works, and we're gonna have to be sending, closing town hall with regularity until it's fixed. But there is some concern that we may, even though it should not be at the end of its life, that it is going to need to be replaced. So we have put, what is that, thirty-six thousand dollars?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars in the maintenance for both of the systems, so that we have that money there. We will know, right, in the next few days, I guess they, they're coming Thursday?
Uh, tomorrow or Thursday, Darnell?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
So we'll have more information tomorrow, but for right now, we cannot cut money out of that budget, or town, town hall is gonna be closed for the summer and everyone's gonna be working remotely. So, I just want to point that out. That's, that's a big item, but it's there for a reason. The other thing I want to mention, we're going to get to the human resources firm next. But what, if you looked at the human resources firms, what you might have noticed is that what we're asking for clearly costs more than we said we would pay for. So, I think we might need to bump up that item, line item. Kyle has some ideas that might cover that, but we're waiting for information. So, that said, what we're doing here is, there's a column that looks like it has no numbers in it, but it does have numbers in it. We're gonna cut items from the budget, and we're gonna do it in that column. If we find, you know, in the next thirty days before we introduce this budget, if we find grant money, or if we find the amount for the HVAC is lower, we will adjust those, and then we will know what we, what items we took money out of, if we want to make adjustments to put money back in. That said, the other thing I did was I took all the committee budgets. I capped them at two thousand dollars, so no committee could request more than two thousand dollars. And then I cut them by ten percent. To, yes, and that's just the committees.
Can I ask why? Because, uh, we're giving raises out while we're cutting the committees' budgets.
So in order to keep our employees, we give them annual raises. And our committees are, you know, they're doing things for the town, but they're, aside from cert really, they're not performing functions that keep the town government going, keep the roads safe and clear, and keep the, keep us safe. We support our committees, and we want them to be able to do what they want to do, but when we have to cut money from the budget so that we can keep our air conditioning on, or, you know, make sure we have the staffing levels we need, then you gotta cut money somewhere. So we do, and there, we do have to kind, I think we have to discuss also this Christmas decor line item. I did not remove it yet, but it's ten thousand dollars for Christmas decor. We already need to buy a shed because the Public Works crew cannot work on their vehicles in their shop because their shop is full of Christmas decor. So I am concerned that when we need AC and all this other stuff, that we shouldn't be spending that much money on seasonal decor, even though we want to.
Well, I, I beg to differ because if you had a landscaper come out, a professional one come out, and you realize how much for commercial decorations, how much they cost, they really cost a lot of money. Not to say we're gonna spend all of that, but they really do cost a lot of money. And the town, I, I think is, the only place that we really decorate is the area where we're gonna have the Christmas event. Our town should be decorated for Christmas. I don't think that the town shouldn't, this, this is the taxpayers' money. I think that we should use it to make the town beautiful. I mean, we don't have to go, we don't have to be excessive with it. But I definitely think that more than just the pathway of where we're having an event gets decorated. I think, you know, like the, the poles coming into Upper Marlboro should be decorated, even if it was just a Christmas tree with some lights. I mean, we really need to consider that. I mean, maybe, like I said, maybe some of that should go towards a shed, you know what I mean? Maybe that should, we should use some of it. I'm not opposed to that. But I'm definitely opposed to, to getting rid of our Christmas budget. Because that didn't only cover, that didn't only cover some of the decorations, it also covered, if I'm not mistaken, Darnell, at one time, he, he told us that that money also covered the beautification for the town of Upper Marlboro during in and out of that season. So, and I think it was just shoved together, if I'm not mistaken. Director Barnes?
Right, so we.
Yes, that is correct. But for this, for this budget season, I asked that that be broken out so that there's no, there's no confusion on my end or anyone's end where that money is going.
Okay. And so how much do we have for the beautification for, for your, on your line item, for your budget?
I believe that is somewhere around ten to fifteen.
Okay.
So I think the problem is, right now, we're ninety-four, ninety-four thousand dollars over budget. So we have to figure out what to cut or where to, we have to cut stuff. We have to figure out what it's gonna be. So, I'm gonna let you guys tell, tell me what you think. There is, is a capital improvement page, which.
Where, where, I would imagine the capital improvements are heavy hitters.
There are heavy hitters. If you flip one more, Kyle can bring up the tab, which is, it's a separate tab. You can't really see it really well in the document because it's a big tab. And I've broken it out a little different from what's on here. There is actually a section at the bottom on the needs we will have if we do, once we have a successful annexation. Now, we can remove them, but we may have some issues when we, when we annex. If we've removed them, we don't have, we, we may, we may be stretching staff really thin and our vehicles. But we can still zero them out. And those are the staff, there's a staff vehicle, a, two police vehicles, and a, a trailer. Why isn't the trailer in there? I don't know why. I thought I put it in there. A trailer, and the trailer, so everyone understands what that is, is just, goes on the Public Works vehicle, and it makes sure that if someone is speeding and crashing into something, it is not a person, but a, a, it's a crash barrier because our people are valuable. So you could zero out those three items, Kyle, and then we could put them back in if the revenue comes in, and that will drop us, but it won't drop us. Just put them, change them to zero. Just three to zero. And then you'll have to go to, back to the other page to see what it did, but it got us to maybe sixty, seventy? So we now have seventy thousand dollars to cut out. There is other, I mean, we can look. A lot of this stuff at the top of the capital improvement budget is grant funded. The, it should talk about this twenty-five thousand dollars for the, this is actually not even Old Mill anymore. We're gonna do Old Mill this time. But this has to do with storm water and curb at Bull Crane and Church Street. Our predecessors probably twenty years ago or some there. Darnell, do you, sorry, Darnell, do you want to explain? Because you can probably explain it better. What's wrong, what's happening to the, the resident car and why we need to fix it?
Yes, Mayor. I'm not exactly sure how long ago it was, but one of our long-serving mayors gave the okay to pretty much install asphalt over top of the sidewalk and put a PVC, I don't think it's PVC, I think it's a, a metal pipe, a metal drainage pipe under the asphalt that was poured on top of the sidewalk, so that the rainwater from the covert on the opposite side could flow through. We've gotten complaints that this is damaging a residence vehicle because the, the pitch to the asphalt is so high that the bottom of their car is dragging on it. So the fix for that is to actually remove all of the asphalt, remove the, the sidewalk and create a driveway apron that isn't as steep. And this affects, I believe, two homes.
And it's unfortunate because it's expensive. That's what the twenty-five thousand in there is for. And I just, I don't know what our, you know, basically the town created this problem, and the town is responsible for fixing it. So.
Those would be town funds.
Those would be town funds. That we can pull, that's, they're part of what you're pulling. So in the revenue section, we're pulling from reserves. So the transfer from reserve is partly to keep, like, reserves needs to be no more than six months of our budget, because otherwise we're just hoarding money. But it can be more than six months of our budget if we're saving for capital improvement. So, so this is a capital improvement. So we can pull money from, I think the amount Kyle has in here, the transfer from reserve is to fund the capital improvement.
Uh, it's a mix of capital proof, a function that's ARPA, the remaining estimated one hundred and ninety thousand ARPA funds. Because it's right now, we're not gonna get it, and actually we already have it, so it's transferring out of our, one of our reserve accounts, the non-operating account. So that's a hundred and ninety thousand, that's two hundred thousand. So the additional amount is probably added a little bit later to cover some.
And I think we looked at that today, and we could pull a little more out, but we also, that's pulling out stuff we can use for capital improvement, and we have to do all this road paving, so it's a hesitancy to, but, but this is a road paving project, so like, I could see upping capital or the transfer from reserve by that amount because it, the reserve still will have, what have we said, five months?
Correct, yeah, right now we have about one point one in, in reserves, not in our operating accounts, but not in our red light speed camera parking, just in the pure, the PNC account and ARPA and the Batango, what's that called?
Like a CD.
The CD, the Batango, the CD and Batango is about one point, a bit more.
So, I mean, we can add to this number to help balance our budget, but I also, you know, we're going into, we're going into that six months when we do that, which is maybe fine, because like, it should, should it be three to four months? Should it be six months? That's a conversation we should have.
No, sorry, I mean, that's.
No, I'll be quiet. I'm not gonna be talking too long.
So I, I would keep the four month. We're going down that. Couple of questions on that. So, uh, perfect, pocket, pocket. Pocket, pocket construction and a hundred eighty K. How, how do we price that out? That's a hundred percent. We asked for a hundred eighty thousand dollar grant. We got it. So that's grant funded.
So that's, yeah.
No town fund, like, like, um- I, I, I was prepared to make, uh- Size of the cuts. No, no, not no, but I was prepared to make, everyone there looking at these leases, a vehicle leases down here. Um, and ask can we push these police vehicles, we're already in that lease and not acquiring new ones, right?
Actually, if you scroll down, the only new leases that are still on this budget are these three public works ones that are in gray. I, I'm, I've been messing with it. So it's, we can all slide over so we can see it better. But it's, um, the, so it's the mower, which they're, they're using a mower from two thousand and five. So we got to buy them a mower. Um, the tractor, which the tractor they have right now, Osha was not happy about. It cannot do what it needs to do and like, it, it'll tip over if they're doing it. Um, so we gotta replace that. And then there's the vehicle, um, sorry, I'm speaking for you, Darnell, and you can speak for yourself. So, tell us why we need these three things and why I haven't, well, that'll explain why I haven't taken them off yet, but we can have that discussion with Director Bonds.
Yes, Mayor. Um, if I, if I'm not mistaken, uh, for what's still here, the FY twenty-one, uh, vehicle lease, that is the larger Ford F, uh, seven fifty that's already been approved. The FY twenty-four vehicle lease is a replacement for my vehicle so that the vehicle that I currently drive goes into the fleet, uh, for crew members to use, um, because that one is completely outfitted. Uh, the large tractor or skid steer. The tractor that we currently have, it's great for, you know, pushing snow on sidewalks and maybe doing mulch. However, anything larger than that, um, it starts to tip over. It currently, uh, we've been using it to move pallets around the yard, um, simply because, you know, anything that gets delivered on pallets or anything of that nature due to the gravel, we can't move around. Um, Osha understood that, you know, this is what we have to do. We have to work with what we have. However, they did ding it and say that it was unsafe. Um, this tractor has been rolled over once, um, a few years ago and, and, and it's very narrow. Um, the X mark zero turn mower, um, the one that we currently have, like I said, is from two thousand and five. Um, it has to go in for numerous repairs every year. It's doing its best to hold on and we're trying to limp it along. However, it does not need to be frontline anymore. Um, I think with it being frontline and not a reserve, we're just going to continue to, uh, you know, just blow money on it. Um, and if there's anything else that I'm not seeing on the screen, uh, please let me know.
Your mower, did you say your mower? Oh, okay, sorry, I was gonna ask, sorry.
So what is the impact this is setting for you, Director Bonds, you, Kyle and Chief as well? These three vehicles, the staff commissioner vehicle, Director Bonds, uh, Chevy Subaru you just mentioned, parking authority vehicle.
We erased the parking. Parking, yeah. Right on my page. Sorry, I should be letting you. So these two we just erased.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Director Bonds, what's the impact if we pushed your new vehicle out?
The director's vehicle?
Right.
How does that impact your functioning?
As of right now, um, we currently do not have any spares, uh, spare vehicles so that when we send something to, um, uh, to get worked on, um, things of that nature, Lord forbid, uh, one of these trucks goes down with a serious mechanical issue. Um, then we have, uh, instances where we're either driving the, the stake body on a consistent basis, which is our largest vehicle at the moment, which is not in efficient use. Um, if anyone has an accident, we're pretty much a year out from, you know, another vehicle, you know, unless, uh, legit completely, uh, replaces that vehicle, which with depreciation and all that, it's, we're probably gonna be waiting a year for a vehicle. Um, not to mention how long it's gonna take to actually build the vehicle. Um, as of right now, we kind of hold back on, uh, larger scale repairs until there's a time when someone goes on vacation or something of that nature just so everybody's not crunched up in, you know, a couple of vehicles. And of course, it would be great to, uh, be able to divide the team up and send everyone to do different tasks, uh, at the same time. As of right now, we have to send a couple of people to do, uh, to do different tasks when, you know, they can be split up and we can get more things done throughout the day.
Because you have, your guys have one vehicle, so the foreman has a vehicle, you have a vehicle, the foreman has a vehicle, and the other guys have a vehicle. Or are there only two? It's on here. The answer is on here, how many trucks you have. You only have two pickup trucks.
There, there's three pickup trucks and the dump body.
So-
And I also want to know that the dump body is, uh, when it, when it's in the yard after bulk day, for the most part, it is loaded if it's not completely full. So it's, you know, not, not the best thing to be driving around, especially loaded. Um, because we don't have a dumpster at the yard or anything of that nature for when we need to discard things, things like that.
How much did they, uh, for the roads again?
I'm sorry?
For the road paving?
Uh, the estimate for, uh, well, it's three million for by itself, but those construction works are you roll down, so.
It's more.
Yeah, it's a bit more than, uh, taking a loan out or pay for that is due to-
I'm sorry, if I may, I'm not sure if anyone had a follow-up to what I said. I kinda lost audio for a moment. Just wanted to make sure I'm not, uh, missing anything.
No, I didn't have a follow-up. I was just, uh, taking it all in.
So, if we do the reserve at four months, this is what's there for capital. But we have to keep in mind, like, this is the problem. It's, this is like over, it's like half a million, right? It's in, a, a little over half a million is in reserve that would be for capital improvement. But again, Kyle just told us to School Lane had been quoted at three million to pay. So that's why I'm hesitant to take more money out of the, basically, it's not reserve anymore. Reserve is, is the four months, right? And then the rest of it is capital improvement money. Knowing how much we're going to need to spend to pave the roads that haven't been paved, um, I'm hesitant, like, we can, we can take, definitely, we could take the twenty-five out to cover this road paving situation as a capital improvement. And that'll get us closer. I'm hesitant to take a lot of money out of capital improvement because of how much money we need to spend paving roads and in what even financing at the government borrowing rate is gonna cost. But the three of you, like, but, you know, we've got it, we've gotta figure it out. I could figure it out, but I think people would be mad. So I think you guys have a right to weigh in on that. Not that it's like you can't be mad, it's just you have a right to weigh in on what we're keeping and what we're not keeping. And I think that kinda comes to your point, Commissioner Law, is like, are we taking, like, is a Christmas decoration something that we're gonna take money out of reserve, pay for, when we also have to, oh, she's here. I'm talking to you and you're not here. Here's your chair. And your, okay.
Thank you.
So, so, you know, we have over half a million dollars that is available for capital improvement. And we know that just School Lane is gonna cost us three million dollars to pay. That's why I'm hesitant, like, to take money out of reserve to cover Christmas decorations or, you know, anything really. The, the, the road paving thing or the, the driveway apron thing, we have to do that. So I can see taking the twenty-five thousand, but that's my, my concern is that we try to take as much as we can out of the budget before we start going into the money we need for the capital improvement of road paving.
My question would be, didn't move first, but this is a particular, um, this new board came about. I thought we had allocated money and funding for the roads. And I thought that we did the contracts and everything. I was just looking to find out who needs some stuff.
So the, the road, yeah, the road con, the road engineering is happening, but the amount of money that the state gave us to pay for road contracting and paving is four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the, the contract is how much? Are we paying need and hunt?
Um, I would say all in, like, this lady took the most of it, around a hundred, you know, two thousand just for the construction drawing.
For the drawing.
Surveying, maybe a bit less than that, I can see that.
So we're left with not, probably not even enough money to pave Spring Branch Drive, let alone start tackling the whole re-engineering of School Lane and Old Mill Road, which both need to be done. We're either gonna have to borrow money to do that, which is gonna cost the town two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years. Or we're, we're going after grant money too, which is gonna cut it down a little, but it, it's not enough. And so that's why I don't wanna take this money out of the capital improvement part of the reserve. I want, I think we should keep that money for paving roads. That's my position.
I mean, it's not a bad idea. I mean, makes sense if we, if we need to move some money around.
Do you wanna add, add twenty-five thousand to the two hundred transfer from reserve? Because that's a road paving. Let me get two twenty-five. So what do we, went out like forty, so we have to find forty-five thousand dollars to cut.
And we're also, um, just so, I talked to Mayor about it, but we're also waiting to see how month of April closes out on, especially parking and parking fines amounts as we could. That could adjust our estimates for next year.
Right.
So then that's in a couple of revenue categories, like special events, seeing how Marlboro Day plays out, the parking and the fines, also, uh, the town permits as well because we're, the food trucks are stacking on top of each other. So that's the higher revenue source, so we're trying to analyze that data.
So we can reevaluate the revenue sources, but we're probably not gonna find forty-five thousand dollars. So if we can make this number in this box fifteen thousand dollars for right now, but we're gonna have to understand that I may have to make those cuts. Well, we, we could, we could talk about it at the beginning in May and make the final cuts in the work session. But we need to get this number down. It's at forty-five now. Um, so, and we can't really cut any of these top, um, the top numbers in the capital improvement because they're grant funded. This comes into kind of this discussion, what you're saying about Director Bonds vehicle. Um, an option, an option no one, no one likes is to have Director Bonds get the vehicle halfway through the year, okay? But then that is of course committing us the next year for the full payment. Like he could get, you know, so that's kind of the problem. We should be ready to make the full payment.
You could also, if we combine some items into lead a group, we could spread it out over a couple of-
We could spread the lead a-
Yeah, and if the amount's high enough.
Like if we put his truck, his trailer and his lawnmower all into one item, we, and went over, I mean, I have it over four years, I think, right now. So went over five years?
I would say five, but then not more than six.
Okay, so that'll get us down.
And I'll run that with a half payment the first year. So if we reduce eleven thousand, three thousand, I'm up. All of the-
It looks a little different because I've been playing with it since then. That's already been taken, that's already been taken. So the only new vehicles left in the budget are the ones for public works. But like, the, the lawnmower, I'm not willing to cut the lawnmower out or the tractor, uh, because I just think-
When we don't have a lawnmower?
It's from two thousand and five. And they're keeping it going, but like, if we cut the lawnmower out and that goes, all the grass is- So we gotta keep the lawnmower.
It's a normal, I mean, it makes sense.
I mean, Darnell, I think, is holding it together with like wishes and prayers. Yeah, and case and duct tape, like, we gotta keep the lawnmower.
Yeah, give him the lawnmower.
But yeah, if we bundle these three, let's see what that looks like. But that's not gonna, that also isn't gonna get us down far enough. We've got to make some other cuts. And that's why I'm looking at the Christmas decor. I know we want it, I know we want it to look nice, right?
What did you do last year? Cut ten percent from, anything that we could cut ten percent from?
So we cut ten percent from the-
You wanted to do that?
No, we actually cut ten percent from the committees. And I did that this year again. Um, I capped all the committees at two thousand so that no committee could get more than two thousand. And then I cut ten percent.
Two thousand for the whole year?
Yes.
Not eliminating grant, uh, special events or broken out.
Special events are separate. So it's only the committees themselves.
Okay, so, so that normally covers what?
It's like homeless ladies events, um, so like stuff that's not like Marlboro Day or-
For the green team, it covers the-
Do you have a committee meeting and we have a little snacks and stuff like that? Okay.
Snacks at committee meetings aren't usually covered. So snacks at committee meetings aren't like a thing. They're not covered by the town usually. Because the mon, the town wants the money to go to, like, the products that the committees are producing.
Right, but if we have, um, cookies or soda, I don't think that's what they do. Especially when you, our volunteers that are coming out after work, you want to give them a little drink and some cookies. I'm not talking about a meal.
It just cuts into what they can do with the budget.
Well, not, it's not every meeting thing. We did it for the meeting, welcome the people back into the town hall for, um, the evening committee. But that's not something we plan to do every meeting.
Those are, like, a change compared to what we need?
Yeah, it's not, it, it makes very little difference, but it, it feels like- Yeah, it's not, it, it makes very little difference, but it, it feels like if, if Director Bond and Chief Burris had to go through their budgets and cut things they needed, which you'll see they did, that's what, why there's numbers in these columns.
Yeah.
That is, our committees also have to have some kind of cut. And the easiest way to deal with that is to just give them a 10%. I want you guys to see.
Media relation. We recently went through that, our.
Yeah, media relation.
That whole process.
Kyle.
Yeah, great.
Oh, he's, he hears that.
So, having budgets of 15K only so far. But what do we, what do we need to do for?
Yeah, that's a good point. Because if we're not, that, that's the one of those few that are not have an annual contract.
It's an hourly rate, right?
So we can.
So we can monitor that budget. Time to utilize our crap a little more, let's cut it in half, cut it down to 75.
Take, take it out of the other line, Kyle?
Not here.
Yeah, don't do it there, put it in the.
Oh, right, you have a chance, yeah.
Sorry, in the capital improvement, we had to do it different because of how it's set up, but this one. Extra zero.
Down to 30.
30, so now we've got, we're down to 30, guys.
GG Plant and.
Is that Better City?
GG Plant, oh, that's annexation stuff.
Uh, it's, it's a mix of Annexation, Better City, that comes ARBA.
That comes out of ARBA funds.
The 200 for the 190 transfer.
And that, which, well.
What's the DG training?
General Government Training? So all, all the staff, go ahead, Kyle.
Okay, so this year we split, it used to be all in one, so all the commissioners and general government staff were all together on the line item. For, that's like Ocean City and conferences or anything you guys go to, miscellaneous training, like, um, so we actually split that. And I was actually just looking at that because we do have 8,000 a year for commissioner expenses, new line item, because we're going to split and put all of your hotel and MML stuff up there. So we better track what we actually spend on staff because we haven't had any data on that. And we can try to look at.
It's really the 8,000 we should be looking at, not the 5,000, I think.
Yeah, well, well, there's five of you that go to MML versus maybe two.
They calculated, they calculated the 8,000.
But the, the, right here we have it, 15,000.
All right, where are you?
Right.
Dues, dues and subscriptions.
That's a mix.
Oh, okay, I'll.
The dues and subscriptions, yeah, I asked about that.
That's the subscription, so not, that's not just like to, uh, professional organizations, that's, um, uh, some contact and their emails and their websites and there's Zooms in there.
All the stuff that's on my crick.
All of the computer subscriptions, which we're all, we're taking to look at, where we adjust some of that, not contact, contact. Some of the other miscellaneous things we have to get.
What about printing? We, didn't we get a new, um, a printer, copier?
Right.
Didn't we get a new copier? So we should be able to yield more print, shouldn't we be able to do that out there?
Yeah, that also does, uh, that's landing newsletters, so we don't print that in-house. We send it out and printing costs have gone up, um, because we're already at 15,000 and we haven't run our last landings for the year.
How many landings did you do?
Not enough.
How many, how many?
We do four a year, but this is our other issue I was going to say is that we're out of the land, like we're out of the last landing. Like, we run out of it before it's, we've had it for even like a month.
Yeah, we order 2,000, we mail out 1,800 off the bat to all the property in town. And some go just slightly outside, just because by postal route, it's not exact addresses because it says it's home postage. So at least it's like 200 to give out and we send some stuff to the electric officials and then we, we have a one event and they're all gone.
What?
Want to ask, could we, um, get some prices, if we can get a better cost?
One thing we're doing is, uh, Kirkoson is actually designing the landings in-house. So we're trying to see how much of cost saving that is versus, we were sending out to get designed and printed.
But it's still need to be printed, right?
Correct, yeah, so that, I mean, that could bring the 18s down a little bit. We're just going to.
See if we can get it more than wired.
Also could have, um, just bought, um, some type of, uh, subscription and, um, you know, the design in-house and then printed some of it in-house too. All you got to do is buy it, the night.
Yeah.
Well, we can't print it in-house because we, you have to, it's like a, it's like a.
But you can, you can print as a, copier has that feature, you print as a book.
No, because, because you have to put the big page?
We have to buy new, I'll, I'll talk to the print guy and see. If it does have stapling capabilities, so we can all.
And adjusting the sizes of the paper. You may have to buy ledger versus, um, the regular, you buy 10.
Yeah. But it would print it in the middle, not like we're sending this out with like three staples on the side, like, it will look professional is my, my question.
It can, it can look professional because there's a, I can't think of the software, but there's a software that can allow you to, um, because a friend of mine does it, graphic design. And maybe we can do, ask somebody to do it on the side for us versus a company. I know a couple people do graphic design.
Yeah.
John is doing the designing.
For this landing right now.
Okay.
So that, we're going to see how much of the cost savings that is designed when we print it and that'll be both a better estimate for next year's. So that's the line item we're actually looking at.
But in a program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have, uh, we have.
He has, right, that's under.
Here we have a social media and a popular question. What's the feeling on digitizing the landing?
Completely, so they did do that in the past. I know it's changed with Mayor Turner, um, to go back to the mail in everyone, so that could be something. That'd be more.
Well, chase your brain. Well, I'm thinking in terms of, we already have constant contact, we can talk about what the numbers are and actually open up. Doing landings as a advertising, you don't print one, 2,000 or whatever the number is matured, you have them available at certain events or years, for whatever reason. But that's also a question I would, you know, maybe ask the resident, because you might get it just to be created or something that, would people read it if it was digitized completely? Just thinking of not only money, but the amount of paper that we're printing.
So.
And do people.
To kind of, so to.
Anyone mention an appetizer?
And, um, and so to go to, I, I know what you want to say, we can't, I can say something about, um, what, to go back to why, so it was digitized and why Tonga brought it back was people were upset, people wanted it. Now, granted, that was four, five years ago, right? The other aspect, which I want to just kind of add, ask Kirkoson to weigh in on, is, is this in any way tied to notifications and notices about things, although it's not often enough? Because remember you were talking to us about how much it costs every time we pass an ordinance? Is that tied into this line item? Okay.
No, it's not a monthly, but some places that do that, it's monthly.
Okay, so we can't use it for that?
It seems, it seems like we do have the publications, it seems like they come out after we have a visit and it's like a report tomorrow and work that happens.
So it's both, it has all the things that have happened and all the things that are coming, yeah.
Right, but to me, it's more information about the things that have already occurred to me because, um, people most likely look at contact, contact to find out what's coming. Because you don't know when you're going to, I don't know when the, uh, the book will come out, I think they come out three or four times a year, I wonder when they're coming out. So I think people depend on.
That's what I was going to say, what about two times a year instead of four times a year or something like that and adding advertisers when you need?
Well, have an annual one that has everything that occurs.
Appetizers.
What I, what I want to kind of, because one of the things we talk about with the landing is getting information out to residents. And sometimes when something's coming out, like the special election, well, we're sending postcards too, but, but sometimes there's things that we want to communicate to residents that we would have to send a postcard for, but we don't because we're sending the landing. So I'm not, right, exactly. So I'm, I'm not saying we have to keep the landings, but I'm, um, I'm, I'm just kind of trying to put all the, the different.
I don't think we should get rid of probably, I don't think that that's the answer. I think the postcards are a way of saving money, but I also think that, we mentioned something, maybe during the annually or Tom mentioned this, I don't think, I think we should do a, um, like, what happened during the year and, and put it all together so people can read it. Because a lot of times people miss it and a lot of times people don't read, I don't think everybody reads them.
I think some people read it when it comes in, but then it gets gone with the newspapers, you know?
I definitely, so I get emails about it like throughout, like I do, I do have people email me like months later and say, oh, I was reading this thing and, so, but is that, is that enough people to spend this month? Like this is kind of the question, and what I was going to just say is what we could do, I don't know, Kyle might murder me for this suggestion, what if a, a resident of the town can request a paper copy? Now, what that does is puts on staff to do the mail, like right now, the mailing is done by. So do we really save money?
That's how we used to do it, it used to be emailed out and then we had a list of residents who we could mail.
Right.
We could do postcards and QR codes saying, if you want a hard copy, contact Town Hall and then just order a couple hundred for events.
Right, so if we're going to do the switch, we would send everyone a postcard telling them we're doing the switch and how to contact Town Hall by hauling us?
We could do a postcard, it's a landing, like, hey, new landings out, QR code, copy, and then the back could have some, somebody could make.
Uh, no.
John?
John, I think you're muted, uh, you need to mute.
Um. Hold on, I'm trying to get unmuted.
You're muted, you're, yeah.
What was the question?
Yeah.
No, no, you're good, you, we could just hear you talking.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I like that idea. Like if it, I wouldn't, you know, I know we had one resident here that. You know, I'd like to know what, is it, is it a physical thing? Are people getting their information from it? Is it keepsake that folks are having? Are we, not only is it just the money, but are we being efficient in getting the information out? If it's something that's quarter, quarterly as opposed to some digitized version on a monthly basis? Is there utility in doing a year in review? That's, you know, kind of a hand keepsake type of thing, so just, just trying to think through different options. Personally, too, I would like to see less of them in my front yard. But, uh, that's neither here nor there. The point of it is, yeah, if we're doing a lot of the printing or whatever, making sure that we're getting the most utility and efficiency out of what we're getting.
So should we cut this line item and ask staff to get creative and see, or should we just? I like that line item in the empty box of something they're looking at for next month? Do you know what I mean, Kyle?
I would say.
Hold that box.
Make a suggestion.
Yes.
I would say.
I mean, I will say like.
At least have it and figure out how you fit it in the box. Cut it in half, cut the.
Oh, yeah, well, that, that was my, that was my thought process, that's why I put it up. I was, I think that we've spent too much money here.
They want to cut it 75 and then we've got to figure out, you've got to figure out how to make it work.
Then the other, the secondary question I had on that, where you brought this up, what, John had mentioned one time before, and John, I don't want to speak for you, but the cost of putting, um, notices or things in a, in a public paper, so I think it's, what do we use, the PG Post or PG Defense, whatever it is? No, it's actually relatively expensive for a posted basis.
Yeah, tell us how much it costs to post things in the PG Post. Is it $600?
Thanks, I think, but that's, I think it's a charter.
Right.
That should be a charter.
Let me put.
John's comped in, Josh.
So I think the way, the way the comments work for the work session, the way the input, public comment works for the work session is that it's at the end. So, um, I, I may have captured what she was saying, um, because I think I was, I, I think I've captured what you wanted to say, but I'm not sure.
That's why we, we went digital with, it's on it.
Yeah.
Most of the people didn't respond. We sent out, said, if you want the landing mailed to you, you have to let us know or send us your email and we'll get it changed. Half the town didn't get anything. And that made people angry. That's why when Tommy came on board, they were not happy. She went with a newsletter on a quarterly basis. You may not have to do this extravagantly as you do it, but they do want information. They wanted, you know, most of them would like it once a month because a lot of the times, by the time the landing gets to the public, most of it is already over.
Yes.
The constant contact is taking, there are a lot of things, people get it every day, every week. That, that makes a difference. But if you have, you can ask people to come, get on the town mailing list or paper, or they could say paper and get on the town email list. And you would have to open knock on every door and make sure that they're either on.
Um, I kind of want to go back to the, John or Kyle, where is that item? When we post things in the newspaper, in the line item?
Printing, right here.
It's not.
Printing the 18,000 dollars?
It's usually due to subscriptions, is where that comes out of.
What's the 18,000 dollars worth of printing?
This is what we've been talking about with the landing. I'm sorry, I'm talking, I'm talking about the.
You're talking about PG Post?
PG Post, well, every.
Oh, okay, because that, okay.
Yeah, so whenever we, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but whenever we, um, pass an ordinance or, or have introduced an ordinance, passing, you know, public periodical for a period of time.
That is correct. It has to be printed usually one time in the newspaper.
But nobody reads the newspaper, so we're basically.
That's a charter change we're trying to make.
So with the charter change that we're, if we're going to, we're going to say, yes, we're going to ask for that charter change for sure, we could reduce dues and subscriptions by how much money? Thousand dollars?
Well, 1,500.
Can you do that? We'll, we'll say, hey, Charter Review Committee, this, you have to do this because of our budget. You're, you're putting the amount you're taking out, not the amount it's going to be, sorry.
Putting a minus in?
No, just put 1,200. No, put 3,000 in there. Uh-oh, are we off because you've been doing it the other way? Only the amount you're removing from the line item.
This was half that we were bringing down anyway.
Right, but.
Up here, we have it.
Yeah. Was there anything else?
Uh, no, we never touched the, uh, the, the items.
Well, we deleted some, we, we deleted those ones that I knew we were going to have to.
We didn't have.
Well, we're going to maybe change the, we've just got to get this, it's at 30 now? Or 27? Okay, we're at 27. Um, I mean. Yeah, have we got anything else we can? Uh, now that we're at 25.
Where, 27?
27. What, sorry, uh, what's GG contributions? I asked you about that and I forgot.
That is, um, for the Spring Branch and the Fire Department that comes out.
Oh, that's come out of ARBA, okay.
So that's.
That's why I put a gray box around it.
Yeah, starting next year, that's going to be. Contribution to the firehouse helps us our tax differential though.
Yeah. I, I put the gray box for that reason and just forgot it, so. I, I put the gray box for that reason and just forgot it, so.
Well, that would have, I'm looking at certain, they spent twelve dollars.
Why assert twelve dollars?
One ID card.
But didn't they buy?
More than that.
Yeah.
I guess that's what they kept, kept tons of twelve.
No, but they bought, um.
Figures are.
They, they bought, um, first aid kit, some kind of special, right? Didn't you order some kind of special? And how much was that?
About six hundred dollars.
Okay, so they're really at around six hundred, not, oh. Some of the issue is, um, getting stuff categorized. We're still kind of dealing with.
I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
With the C O U M event.
So, that's when we have, uh, like when we had the state delegations, when we have.
Veterans.
Veterans Memorial Day, uh, there were some other things. Groundbreaking. Any, anytime we, we host like dignitaries.
Employee appreciation.
Employee appreciation, isn't it?
Well, trunk or treat is also here and three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Why would we spend so much money there?
What?
Trunk or treat.
That's what it costs.
They had to up the candy, I think, didn't they?
Well, we're upping the candy for people to come from other areas to come to the town and get candy. It's not our town residents. It's a, it's a mixture.
Right.
Put their town on the map, uh.
In what way?
What was it? How many people came?
Yeah, but they're coming just because they're getting something for free and it's something to do with their choice. And they don't have to pay. Again, it's not our town residents, but one, two, actually this is the taxpayer's money, right? Our taxpayer's dollars, right? And we're catering to other people outside of the town.
It, I mean, all our events really are, like, so tr- trunk or treat, Marlboro Day, um, Arts Council and Winter Holiday are all. Open.
But Winter Holiday, we also make money back because we are charging the vendors here. We're just getting, we're not getting anything back.
Mm-hmm.
I did feel a little bit of dent in that, though. It's only, we only get like a couple hundred dollars a eight.
Well, last.
Well, we didn't charge the vendors at all last year.
Last year we didn't charge, but we did get like five hundred dollars. But we didn't charge, but that was with their donation. So, here, there's no donations. We're just coming out of pockets and that's three thousand dollars. I think we should cut that a little bit, too.
I just, that event has been the event that has transformed the image of the town, I think, in that. I, I, I just, I, I didn't understand it at first when it was first proposed, um, by Mayor Turner at the time, but it really done what she thought it would, which is kind of get the town to be seen as doing positive things. It gets a lot of positive feedback on social media. It's really, it really is good for the town's image.
So many people come. It's huge. Like, it's gonna get bigger next year. I mean.
I would come too. I mean, if you're giving something away for free, but I'm just saying, we're not, we're, it's not benefi- it's not benefiting the, the town monitoring. But I understand that if you're thinking about annexation, you want people to, uh, get a feel for the town, that's all well and nice, but I don't think we should con- continue to increase it. I think that we should have, you know, cutoff point for it. Not to say, you know, take it away totally, but we should cut it off a little bit, okay? So, if we do a hundred bags of candy or two hundred bags of candy, that should be it. If we don't, if we run out, I mean, I know Kyle was, was running out going to get candy the last couple of years, and we shouldn't do that. Once we're done, we're done.
Have we, I, I think the answer is yes. Have we solicited some of the local businesses?
What's that?
Should be candy or, you know, have a car outside or anything like that. I don't know.
So, yeah, so we've got, the businesses bring candy. They just run out of candy in the first, like, twenty minutes. Um, the other thing, like, so we have gotten donations in the past, but because we are not a nonprofit, like, we just don't get as many donations. Um, so.
Hey, also, I'm gonna add that, um, with all the cars, some people that set up, I think it should be stipulated that they, in order to participate, they need to bring more candy than they did last year. Some people were only coming with a little bit. And I don't know how that would work, but.
We weren't providing candy to the cars.
We, we were because, because of how many people come, people won't per- like, if you have to participate and buy all this candy, like it, like people wanna decorate their car, they wanna buy some candy, but there's a limit to how much.
They didn't realize how many people were coming up.
Why, that's what I'm saying, why we can't have a limit?
But I was kinda, right, but I, I guess my question was, they're providing some candy.
Yes.
Instead of being a car here, it's not that. Just for a car to be here.
No. They provide some candy. We provide additional candy. Um.
How many bags did we make last year?
We don't make that. We only made the bags the one year we had the drive-through.
Okay.
Um.
I remember that, it was a lot of that.
Right, cause it was drive-through. I think we had a thousand bags.
Yeah, nine hundred.
Nine hundred, nine hundred bags, okay.
So, how are we giving out the candy? Just handfuls of each item?
It's supposed to be like one item, one.
We told the people one item, like, when you're getting out candy, we'll operate us one piece of candy per kid, come to your car, um, couple, you know.
Hard to regulate that.
And what we can do is, we could say, you need to bring this amount of candy and we will give you this much candy, but we get, you have, you have to show us your candy and then we'll give you one bag if you've brought X amount, two bags if you've brought.
X amount.
More. Um.
I think we went, maybe it's out. So, and we, that's the initial budget, had candy built in.
The problem is that it, it grows in popularity every year and then you have more and more people coming. Um, I mean, we could make it only an hour. At that point, though, you're not, you're cutting out the DJ, which maybe we cut out the DJ and put music. Uh, do we ha- oh, we have the speakers from the movie night. So, we couldn't cut out the DJ. So, we could, we could make it two thousand.
So, is that, the DJ was included in this line item? So, if it was broken out, it would've been easy to tell that. I'm thinking we spend three thousand.
Well, maybe put one thousand in that column. You did that already. Okay.
And we're also looking at, uh, sponsorship, we thought for.
Right.
Marlboro Day, that's something we could carry over, um, especially if one of the Main Street businesses. Uh, even five hundred dollars.
Other than the DJ.
Yeah. We'll just have to get a playlist.
How much would the?
He said it was a.
The DJ is, uh, it's either six hundred or eight hundred dollars.
For how long?
Four hours, including setup and breakdown, so.
I mean.
It wasn't, it wasn't. I thought it was three thousand and ten.
What else can you want business involved in that, right?
Yeah.
Does, does, does come in and.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can run a music, um.
Truck. Doesn't it bring you home?
We don't want a truck, we don't want trucks, actually.
People were disappointed we had no food.
People were disappointed. We, hold on, yeah. So, Tommy is saying people were disappointed there wasn't food options at trunk or treats? So.
We have some food trucks.
That's what Tommy just said. So.
Yeah, it's, people were.
If we let two food trucks in.
Maybe two in each end or something?
I think one at each end, probably, but it can't be, it's gonna have to be food.
And I think one of the reasons those, uh, clothes, so I always try to put like, pretty much each pocket, I think, clothes. But I mean, if they're not, if they can't say that they're gonna be open, I would definitely say that.
So, um, speaking of Main Street Chief, there were a lot of security concerns last year on Main Street with trunk or treats. So, maybe part of the discussion is moving it off Main Street. That was something you mentioned. There were. Because of the building situat- if, if the building's built, then maybe it's fine, but without that building on the corner, we have safety concerns. The, that building at the corner of, do you wanna explain what happened?
You know where the fencing is up?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a hole, so a girl fell in a hole.
Oh, last year?
Yes. Cause it wasn't properly covered and because of the construction, the light pole for you cross the street is only, the, the fence, the pole is here, but the fence is behind you, cause you can't put it in front of it because now you won't be able to supply. So, because the fence is behind it and it's still that way, it leaves that gap.
Well, can we have them to fix it because of?
Well, the building still has the construction, so.
Yeah, but they can still move the.
They didn't. I think they did.
They can still move the fencing around to make it still.
I just.
Right, but it's still, the, the hole is still around the perimeter of the building, so if the fence is moved, cause people were leaning on the fence and it slid. That's how I think it moved to the first place. She was leaning on it and when the fence kinda moved, she fell kinda down in the hole.
So, was the suggestion. We, instead of having it on me, just.
It was to discuss it.
Well, the other thing is, Waterman is a bunch of traffic, foot traffic, and we have cars coming through here as well. So, it's like trying to stop the people from walking when cars are turning, cause there's no way around that intersection. You know, if, if you tell them to go, Governor Oldwood, that's fine, they go down, um, Water Street. That's where everybody's parking in that parking lot. So, if you try to fix that, they're crossing the street by the seventy-eleven. So, it's like that intersection was a lot of moving parts and we only had one search person and myself trying to stop fifty people at one time from crossing, cause the light is red or it's green, so it's, it's kinda.
So, if we move location, we could bring in money with food trucks. So, we can, we can look at the, so still reducing it by a thousand dollars because same as other events bringing in money, if that event brings in money, then maybe we need, well, maybe we consider bumping it up, back up. If it's gonna have food trucks, then maybe you want the DJ, so people are staying for the food trucks. People can come for an hour.
You need a bigger window.
No, we're, I, we're not married to the DJ. My husband or Karen's husband or Tommy's.
Part of the events committee, we are not opposed to moving things around.
Uh.
And we don't think so much.
Okay, so. Where are we at? We got twenty-eight?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, three thousand on the Marlboro Day. Did we spend all of that money?
And we take some of the events committee money.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking, uh.
Stop taking my money.
Not yours. If, if, no, cause if.
That's it.
Because it's one, it, it belongs to the board. You're just their reagan. You're not.
That's, that's the one I, I'm, I'm.
But it's not your money. They.
It is.
We'll talk about it later, but it's the, the, the board, my, the board of.
The board, everybody has, you have your money.
He doesn't choose how to spend the money. None of us choose how to spend them. The, the board, your board want, do you want the? Rose, is it Rose, Rose, Wanda Rosemary and Sam, is that right? They choose how to spend them. So, okay, sorry.
Maybe, we haven't spent five thousand yet, um, so we'll know here in the next couple of weeks or by May, that actual figure's gonna be, what we can get donated and stuff like that.
But with the, like, U-Hauls and the postcards and all that stuff, that usually puts us, we usually spend more than six thousand.
Well.
On what?
Cause it's just in other budgets. Yeah?
It's about two thousand, I'd have to look back.
Chief and Darnell, you wanna do weigh in? Cause I think sometimes you're taking stuff out of your own budget. For Marlboro Day. Is that true?
Everybody.
All the same money.
See, it's, um, everybody, it's his money and it's Darnell's money and he's his.
So.
For Marlboro Day.
So, this is one of the reasons why I asked about the event overtime, because you gotta think, all of the staff is working and the board is then working at time and a half rate.
Yeah.
Uh, it's an all-day event plus, so it's really more than eight hours. It's closer to ten or eleven hours.
That's a Marlboro Day?
So, that's an overtime.
The road is six AM.
Yeah.
And the event's not gonna be over till three, really four-thirty.
We're gonna have to open the road till like five.
Right, so.
What time we start?
But you have to set the roads.
You have to.
I know a little bit earlier. I do know that.
Cause the vendors have to come in and set up their booths and they have to be set up before the parade starts. And they're, the other thing is because we're dealing with a sh- a, a street festival and because of safety concerns with crazy people arriving through street festivals, it has to be locked down, like, not a single vehicle is even in that area by, before.
I remember.
So, it's really strict and that means we need extra time to move out vehicles that need to go out, so. I don't want anyone getting. Sorry, Darnell, you lost the six o'clock.
I expected that.
We, uh, go back to the commissioner's thing, I think, and then maybe we already settled on this, but Kyle, I think you said you were gonna look at what the, cause that was all folded into with general government training classes, right?
So, I can break this.
We should have looked at that this year.
Yeah, but next year.
Got about seven thousand.
It might snow next year.
Uh, the, the M M L would be.
And then.
So, but that wouldn't get us to thirteen?
Where's thirteen?
The eight and five, expensive with the general government training. Adding those two together, because that's what it's all in one bucket for.
Right.
But I'm saying, even with the M M L expenses.
Oh, it's not gonna get us that far. Right, so maybe our commissioner expenses line item can be reduced.
Yeah.
Can you reduce our commissioner expenses by a thousand dollars? Uh, Commissioner Culber says, can you reduce it by three? Will that get us all to M M L?
Uh.
Spring and whatever.
Spring and, it probably would send everyone to both spring or, uh, summer and fall.
And then I have.
Five and two or something.
I have the mayors, cause.
You have some mayors up in there, um.
I don't know if we can do three, cause I have to go to the mayor's. Why don't you cut that by two instead of three?
Okay, and I'll take, uh, I'll take a thousand out of staff training, out of the middle ground.
I don't have it.
Out of the staff training, the five.
Okay, I guess other, the other departments took that.
It's staff training.
The G T training.
Well, there's a couple of different, there's staff training and everyone has training for the staff.
Yeah, sure thing. Reduce that down.
We're gonna reduce that for, I mean, the, the problem with, like, the public safety training is it's all required, so Chief can only reduce it, but, like, I don't know how he reduced it, frankly, because it's not optional. So, where are we at now? Twenty?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
We're trying to get down to fifteen.
Can we reduce the Christmas decor by a little bit?
For the ten thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What can we take out of that?
Six, two thousand. Three thousand.
Got us to twenty-two or twenty-one.
I could probably share you two thousand dollars from John's.
Are you sure?
So, how?
A lot of COVID expenses.
Leave us set.
Okay, three out of Christmas.
All right.
And then you're cutting out of supplies?
Yeah. Take fifteen hundred dollars.
So where are we at? 19? I was like, I don't need that.
I need 1,000,000, I've been looking for you.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, I think with, again, like we did this past year, with speed camera revenues, like, kind of, we haven't gotten there, but what we did with the speed camera revenues was we estimated it extremely low, again, because we don't know, like, if people start slowing down miraculously, it would be wonderful, um, but we, so if the money's coming in higher than this, we're going to have to do, kind of, like, we did, we did the adjustment, so, you know, if we keep this spreadsheet on the back end, um, as to where we need to cut, we get to a point where we're looking at, are the revenues coming in? Yes, we should be putting some into capital improvements for the roads, but can we increase some of these line items that we cut? As long as we keep this information, we know how to do it easily. You're into the budget book now. But that's still, I'm, I got work to do on that.
Probably we're done.
Where are we down? We're down to 15?
Yeah, I could probably.
We did it?
I mean, we're at 80.
That's close enough and we can finish, finish it, it has to be zero by next work session, but when we, because we're introducing the budget, uh, we have to introduce it in April to pass it in May, so can we introduce it without it being balanced? Well, let's see where you, um, once the revenue, we look at the revenue projection, um, maybe what we do so that we can introduce it is pull from reserves, but then we know we got it not, we got to get rid of that in the May work session.
Get back.
So we pull from reserves to get to zero, but we come to the work session and find that $10,000, because we can't really pull from reserves because we need the money to pay roads. So if, if we want to introduce it with that, so that we can have a zero when we introduce it, and then we shift things around and get that money, not money out of reserve. Does that sound like a good plan to everyone? All right. Like this, it felt collaborative, it felt like everyone. Everyone took a shave and we all, we all got to talk about it, so it's not just me throwing it at you guys. All right.
All right, that's a good question.
That's fine, we can all stand for a little. But we're going to take a reset, I forgot my reset.
So we're done?
We're resetting, we're resetting, and we'll come back and look at the others. So those are all the HR forms. Here. There's a couple of typos that I've found. It talks about, you know, the board's involvement in the hiring process. So. This is where, I think, this is where we were saying it, we would make the, like, changes once we get the charter changed to change that, like, hire, hiring element of the charter. Do we need to change this every year?
It usually just happens sometimes, because the, uh, the pay charts are in the budget ordinance every year, so that gets changed, usually if we change staffing levels or something. We've ended up touching it a good amount pretty much every year.
Yeah, you need to update your section. Got to put student. So the chief's position is in the budget ordinance, positions for public works are pretty standard. So general government will have new, what, what else, you're going to have? You're going to have a student assistant.
Yeah, the student assistant's the only funded one.
Do the interns go under, should the interns be in here so that they're covered by it?
Do students slash interns matter, because we usually only have the students and we don't have the interns.
I should go in there. So does anyone have anything on this? So there's definitely, like, typos and little stuff, so we are going to update that and add Kyle's position. That will be introduced along with the budget at the end of the month, so if you have other changes before May, or before, before April 25th, let us know. Well, we're going to introduce the personnel ordinance with the budget ordinance. So it's not the deadline, because it's just introduction, but if you have major, major changes to make to the personnel ordinance, like, let Kyle know sooner rather than later, that's part of the budget book. That's the presentation. Two years ago now. Um, all right, so should we move on to human resources RFPs or? So we have four human resources RFPs, um, Kyle, do you want to give us sort of a rundown of the different companies and where they're from and whatnot?
Absolutely.
You already did it.
Yeah, I put stuff on the screen, um, if you can see it, but pretty much I just went through the packets and broke out the costs and their locations, obviously they're all a bit different in what they offer, what their backgrounds are, specialties, so I definitely encourage you to read through the packets. But, I mean, there's not too much I can go pros and cons versus each, which we're not in a closed session. Um, but we do have insurance right now, um, we have one that went over budget, um, so of course, with all these, there's some discussions we can have with costs, bring them down, um, negotiate, I haven't reached out to any of them yet, but if the board wanted me to reach out to a couple of these and see if, what, what it would take to bring it down to kind of our, um, level of, of funding is an option, um.
So, the one thing I want to say about All Profit is that actually they only have coming once a month in their budget, and I, we wanted them to come once, once a week with what we ask.
Twice, twice a month, every other week.
Okay, so, and the McKinney Group has it coming every week, so if we can ask, need to look at every other week and ask All Profit to look at every other week. So, yeah, then those prices would be more comparable. There is potential for, we, we are, there's a grant, Circuit Rider grant, we don't know, but it's possible that we can use some of the funding from that, but we won't know probably till May, right?
Correct, yeah, because we're able to break out on our own and keep all the money for ourselves.
If, right now we're doing the Circuit Rider with another town, it is possible that we can each apply separately, and if we do that, then we could use some of the money to, to pay for the, well, we have to find out if we could use some of the money to pay for the HR. Um, so that may help, because it, what it looks like, right, is what we're asking for costs more. Or, I mean, so one from Texas is a little interesting, because.
Oh, they come in every two weeks.
Right.
They must have an office here.
But it doesn't say they do, should we ask them?
Yeah, yeah, that would be a good question, like, how, how would you manage that, you know, in Texas? Because we don't want to be paying your bank, your bank there, you know what I'm saying? So that would definitely be a question.
So let's, so you're going to ask the other two to change their time in and alter their, give us the prices for those, and you're going to ask the Texas ones for if, whether they are going to be here in person? Do you have any other questions about?
For McKinney?
Yeah.
They have fixed prices, 30K.
Yeah.
Then there's 30K or 32K.
That's my first question, for now.
We're not sure.
So I'm going to think, yeah, it's going to be a little bit separate.
Yeah, but I think the other one's going to be close. I didn't ask, I think, um, All Profit is close to 40,000, too.
Right, every two weeks.
Every two weeks. Um, so that's, yeah, let's get them to give us that information. So the deal is. We. We can have a closed session prior to the next meeting to make a decision. So the next meeting is April 25th. The other option is for Kyle to get the information and send it out to us, for each of you to send me individually, ranked 1, 2, 3, 4. Then I look at those and say, does everyone have the same one, or, you know what I mean, I'll egg them up, and then say, either we need a closed session to discuss and we're going to have to meet before, or we all have the same thought and we don't need the closed session, so we can just go ahead and vote. That way we, it's not all of us conversing, it's not us talking about these, like, because we're going to have to have a closed session at the end of the next meeting. Okay, so that plan works for them. Kyle will get us more information, send it out to us. Anything else? Now, there's one more thing, and then we can get to this, because we added. So, go on to the thing we added to the meeting is this, um, notice of intent to issue part 70 permit, it's not a page, it's here, um, you, we got, you got an email with this? Oh, you didn't, you didn't look at it yet. So, this is the permit itself. So Kyle, do you, do you want to try and take this, or do you want me to take this, or we can try to? I mean, I read over the permit today, did you read over the permit yet?
Pretty much, you don't want to provide any comments to states without opening, uh, there, it's a certification county's land, so.
You can also request a public hearing.
Yeah.
Here's my thinking, like, I'm reading, when I'm reading the permit, it almost seems like you can only request a public hearing under certain circumstances. At the same time, when we were door knocking. At the same time, when we were door knocking and and like when I go outside on occasional days, you know, people complained about the smell, right?
The what?
The smell, right? We all smell it depending on the wind, right, and what's happening, yes. And it can't be good for us to breathe. But is that, at the same, like, can, can we ask for a public hearing? Can we do that in that saying, like, we're definitely breathing toxic stuff?
Who we call in.
And the residents should have the right to speak on this.
Well, that's good. After the hearing, if you, if you want to request a public hearing, you can. And then we'll make arrangements with the facility, schedule a hearing and we'll notify you of the hearing. Interested party and the EPA. The department will publish a notice of scheduled hearing in the legal section of the news, the same newspaper in which the opportunity notification appears at least one time and at least prior to the hearing. The notice goes state, the date, time and location of the hearing during COVID. After the public comment period has closed, the department will review the formal testimony as part of the final review and document, which will be sent to the EPA along with draft part seventy permit and fact sheet.
So there, there's some like stuff in there about how to request it and maybe we need, we need to look into that a little more. Do we, do we as a board kind of feel like we would like to try to get a public hearing so that our residents get chance to speak about it? Or do we feel like we want to provide written comments?
I think that we should request it. Let the residents come out and voice their own issues. Let it not be a board, let's not take this on our side. Because it's, it's more effective if the, um, the residents actually come out and speak their own place.
Yeah, I agree. So we're unanimous that we should request a public.
Feel like they've been heard.
Why?
And they realize that it's not so much we can do.
Right, and also I think, I think forty residents or even twenty residents in a room is more powerful than us writing a letter.
Absolutely. Because we, we, we can't, in certain er instances, we need not speak with us. We need to have their own voice and come out.
So we're gonna figure out how to request a public hearing.
This hearing would be open to all area residents.
Yeah.
So we're kind of, so we're the voice for this.
Right. Well, residents could try to request the hearing, but. Yeah. We're gonna, it's gonna be because there's like requirements as to what you're allowed to request a public hearing for. Did you see that?
Yeah, already, but.
So we have to. Right, and I don't, the question is, is, are there any of this, but we can figure it out, I think.
How do we know?
Well, I think that's what, that's why, that's why the, the residents would know, that's why we need to do it, so, yeah. So we'll work on requesting a public hearing for that. Yeah. Yeah. It doesn't feel like clean air and that was something residents voiced during door knocking.
Oh, it smelled like fire everywhere. And, and I even went to Flansville Mall down that way and I smelled it down here too. That was the day I ate, I told you to come inside.
Yeah, so that was actually a North Carolina forest fire.
I know, but we smell it all the way here.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Didn't we get like weird sky effects from the California?
Yeah, we did.
I normally like one of them, but they.
Weather patterns are weird, yeah. But yes, it's full landfill when you go outside and you feel like.
It's crazy because afterwards I figured it out.
Yeah, that's what this said. It, it doesn't. Um, it's weird. Here, read it more carefully and I'll, I'll print myself another one. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the preliminary approval of the next agenda. Are there any other administrative stuff, by the way, before we go on? If we talked about that other thing, right, and worked out for me, okay. All right.
The First Amendment audit training on Friday.
Yes, if you guys can come to the First Amendment audit training at eleven o'clock here on Friday, it would be good because then you can kind of, although MML may offer it too, so. Yeah. So they're also gonna do an audit of the building, so then they'll be able to tell us what changes we need to make. I took a picture of this setup to look at too. All right, so next meeting, we've got our standard stuff in the beginning, the business. Do you want to, you've got that up, John? We decided table meeting regulations. Did, I, you already, you already took that off because I thought we were going to make that decision.
Yep.
Do you want to read our business items for us?
Will do. A ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero three fiscal year twenty-four budget and introduction. B ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero four personnel and introduction. C H R firm will be a board vote. Of course, we'll have administrative updates and a public comment period and a preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda, and then you all will make a motion to go into a closed session.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Are there any residents online or resident here left? Kyle?
There is nobody online.
All right, so we don't need to do public comment, so everyone's good with this? Is there a motion to adjourn? Do you want to call our role?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Motion carries.
That was an aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Oh, Karen, yeah, can you sign though? All these other things.